The order, please. City mana-- I mean, city clerk, roll call.
Mr. Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler. Present. Um, I don't have anyone for the invocation tonight, so... Commissioner Abraham, do you want to do that for me again?
How are you gonna refuse that? Our Father, we charge you in heaven. Father, we thank you for each other. We thank you for our neighbors. We thank you for this opportunity for the five of us to serve. Father, help us remember, keep in the forefront of our minds, that what it means to serve, that we serve unselfishly. We take initiative where we need to take it. Father, at the end of the day, help us look in the mirror and be comfortable with decisions that we made. All may not agree, but Father, let you, at the end of the day, be our judge. These things we ask in your shoes' name. Amen.
Amen. And tonight, we have Morgan Jezz. If you will come up, please, and help me with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Morgan is in the third grade at Reedland. You can just stand right here. We'll put our hand over our heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Morgan. City manager, any additions or deletions?
None that I'm aware of.
We have a presentation tonight from our airport, our reports on the effects of sequestration on national and local air traffic facilities. Richard Roof and Chris Nehoff, Airport Board Chair. And we also have another board member here with us tonight, Alan Cleat. Glad to have you here, Alan. Richard.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Mr. Peterson, thank you for the opportunity to bring you an update on the effects of sequestration on the FAA and specifically on the tower at Barclay Regional. I have provided Tammy with copies of these remarks, so there are some numbers in there that, in case you need a later reference, you have that available. Purpose of a control tower is to control aircraft and ground vehicles in the vicinity of the airport. Our airport has a zone that's five miles in diameter from the center of the airport, circular zone, and reaching up to 2,500 feet above ground. When the tower is open, any aircraft operating within that zone needs to be in contact with it, and any ground vehicles operating on the surface have to operate in conformity with clearances issued by that tower. It's been a federal contract tower, which means it's not operated by FAA, but it is operated by qualified personnel to FAA standards. Since 1988, FAA originally opened the facility in 1974. We operate from 6:00 in the morning until 11:00 PM at night. We have a staff of six FAA-certified controllers, and all of them are also certified for weather observations, which is kind of critical in the event that National Weather Service's automated equipment goes on the blink. The operating cost is about $600,000 a year. FAA pays all of it. We're not involved at all in any of the financial dealings. That sounds expensive, but if FAA operated that facility, it'd be about one and a half times that amount. So, contract towers are really an extraordinarily efficient way of operating the facility. The tower's kind of important to local operations because it provides for the efficient and safe separation of movements of aircraft and ground vehicles, prevention and mitigation of potential accidents and incidents. The controllers do supplemental weather observations, and they accelerate the flow of traffic operating under instrument flight rules, which means that aircraft is in a protected block of airspace. And this is in transition from between the tower to the Memphis, Tennessee, air traffic control en route facility, or vice versa. The tower last year had about 32,000 takeoffs and landings. That kind of comes out to equivalent of one every 12 minutes. 2,500-plus of these takeoffs and landings were by commercial operators, either SkyWest Airlines, flying as United Express, or by FAA-certified air taxi operators. 1,500 of those operations were by military units of some kind. In fact, if we go back to the original date of the opening of the tower, it right now has operated nearly 1.2 million aircraft takeoffs and landings since day one. Now, here are the immediate issues prior to October 1st. When sequestration came about, FAA asserted they did not have the funds to complete their mission, with a $600 million cut to the agency. One of the items they targeted was the contract tower program. This was regrettable, since furlough for FAA controllers was one payday per every two weeks, whereby they decided to put down, shut down, 149 contract towers and put over 1,000 controllers unemployed out on the street. Obviously, this did not go very well. There have been over 30 lawsuits filed by individual airports or by the U.S. Control Tower Association, of which Barclay Regional is a member. And we're seeking a stay through a federal court in Washington, preventing FAA from enacting any closures until at least the beginning of fiscal 14, which would be an entirely different budget cycle. Unfortunately, the $253 million that was passed in the House and the Senate over Thursday and Friday to get FAA controllers back full-time, and hopefully to take care of the contract towers, came out of the Airways Trust Fund. And this is the fund where money from ticket taxis, freight bills, and fuel taxis goes into the pot for airport improvement grants. So, basically, as an airport administrator, we was robbed. But, that's only on a temporary basis until October 1st. After that, that's going to be pretty much an open-ended question. The problem with the legislation passed last Thursday and Friday in the Senate and the House was, while it took the money out of the trust fund to put FAA back whole for the controller salaries, it did not mandate that FAA keep those 149 contract towers open. Currently, there are letters being generated in the Senate and in the House to Administrator La-- to U.S. Transportation Secretary Lahood and FAA Administrator Herta, asking them to please keep those towers open. It's an ethical issue. Congress has funded them, and in the absence of specific language, it's very much implied that Congress wanted to see those towers remain funded. If FAA does not honor this request, then the last day of operation for the Paducah Tower, assuming no future changes, will be Octo-- or Sep-- pardon me, July-- June 15th. The airport remains open. The airport operated for 20-some-odd years prior to the tower and during the period that the Reagan controllers had been fired. So, it's not a situation where we have not been before, but it's a situation we would rather not be in. The cost to maintain that tower, should we decide to somehow fund that in some mechanism, from the June 15th date until October 1st, would be in the vicinity of $175,000. Now, what happens after September 30? The Obama administration says that their budget proposal has funding not only fully for FAA controllers, but for the contract tower facilities. Now, that would presume that, first, that piece of legislation survives intact in the budget process, and, secondly, we have a federal budget approved by October 1st. It would be fun to ask for a raise of hands of how many people think that will really happen. So, we have that particular issue. But if they fund it in fiscal 14, there's absolutely no problems. The tower continues as is, funded totally by FAA. If FAA does not fund, if the tower's to be operated locally, it would be by the airport administration, which did do it for 20 years. The cost of that would be somewhere between $300,000 and $3,000 to $465,000 annually, depending on operating schedule and number of controllers. The wild card here is the 30-some-odd lawsuits filed against FAA at this point, because FAA did not use their own internal regulations for the proposal to shut down these control towers. It's a complicated subject, but I did want to assure you, the airport remains open, the commercial air service remains there, but we would really like to see that control tower remain open for a variety of reasons. If you have any questions, as you know, just give me a call. I'd be glad to discuss any esoteric details with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Before we go on to motions, I just want to-- I just want to apologize to anyone out there watching tonight that was offended by any comment that I made in the paper concerning the riverfront. I know some people thought that it was inappropriate for me to call Commissioner Rhodes "Joe Citizen", and I did call Alan the next day, and as a matter of fact, I think I said, "How's Joe Citizen today?"
He's fine.
And the way that I talked to Adam when he called me was not in a mean-spirited way, that I said "Joe Citizen" about Alan. I was trying to explain to Adam how we all were Joe Citizens at one time, before we became commissioners. I was, Sander was, Richard was, Carol was, but my choice of words did offend some people, and I do want you to know that I do apologize. We'll go on to our motions.
And by the same token, my first words to Gail were, "Gail, you're my neighbor and my friend. No offense taken. No offense."
Thank you, Alan. We'll go on to our motion. Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the notices for call meetings for 5:30 PM Tuesday, April 30th, 2013, be waived and filed.
Any discussion? City clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Municipal orders. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving a Contract for Auction Services for the Sale of Real Property and Authorizes the City Manager to Execute Said Contract," be adopted.
Second.
City manager.
Thank you, Gail. It has been expressed to me that it's the wishes of this city commission to proceed with the sale of the farmland and house property located at Sheehan Bridge Road. So, tonight on the agenda, I have a municipal order that would secure the services of Chris Colson Auction Realty for that. Before I get into that, let me just point out that accompanying the municipal order is a determination of surplus property that is-- meets the requirements of the city code that that property be determined to be surplus at present and no longer needed for the purpose for which it was acquired. So, that has been fulfilled to meet city code. Regarding the contract that's before you tonight, we-- Mark Thompson and Steve Doolittle and I conducted a process following the city's professional services procurement code that resulted in the selection of and recommendation to you of Chris Colson for the services of auctioning of that property that consists of 174 acres of farmland and a house. So, I've asked Chris to come tonight and explain to you a little bit about the process that will be used, because we don't auction property very often, and this is a fairly large auction, as those things go. So, some of this was new to me, and I learned some things along the way. Some of it might be new to you, but I think when Chris is finished, you'll hopefully understand and agree that this procedure is a very good one to use and will advantage the city in terms of the sale proceeds that we expect to gain. So, Chris, if you would come forward and share a little bit about the methodology here. I will say this, that-- as Chris is coming forward, I will mention one thing, that the compensation for this, we specified that a buyer's premium be used, whereby the buyer would pay a premium above the purchase price, in this case, 110%, which is 10% in excess of the purchase price. From that, 10%, 7% would stay with or be returned to the auctioneer as compensation to the auctioneer for the expenses of it and in compensation for the conduct of the auction itself, and the other 3% of that 10 would go to us. So, the city would technically garner 1.03% of the auction price. So, with respect to the question about how is the auctioneer compensated, that is how that is done. Chris.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, board members, for having me. I actually have a copy for each board member of what I give to Mr. Peterson, if you want it.
Sure. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. There's a lot of-- this auction process is complicated. There's 150 to 175 moves before I get a property to auction. There's gonna be things on the board members' minds that they probably are wanting to ask me. Is that-- would you like to ask me questions? Usually, the first question is, "What do I charge?" That's been addressed. The second question is usually reserve versus absolute. Is that where everybody wants to go with this? Okay. All right. The pros and cons of absolute auction versus reserve auctions. Sometimes, reserve auctions are also referred to as seller confirmation, subject to seller confirmation, or a predetermined bid price before we ever go to auction that has to be achieved, or the property does not sell. I will tell you, I've been doing this a long time, and out of 100 auctions, maybe two are reserve auctions. The pros and cons. Absolute auction generates a lot of excitement and a lot of participation and a very competitive-spirited bidding environment. Reserve auctions do not, just flat-out do not. First of all, the public's bidding against the seller, and they just don't receive that very well. In this case, it would be the city of Paducah. In other states, that's the first question they ask, and we set a price. I said, "Well, the public's gonna be bidding against you. They're not gonna participate." And I have a lot of business professionals, speculators, investors, that will-- first question they ask me, "Is it absolute?" And if I say, "No, but," I'm gonna hear a dial tone. They're gonna hang up on me. Nobody will be there. It will not be productive. The city of Paducah would be out maybe $15,000, $20,000 in expenses and probably, most likely, still own the property at the end of the day. Now, just to elaborate on those expenses, advertising would be paid upfront, of course, if it is a reserve auction, to where, in my proposal, it's absorbed by the auction company. Okay? Second, for my time and efforts for four to five weeks of prep to conduct this auction, there's a lot of money spent on my part, and that's employees, contractors, airs and omissions, general liability insurances, gasoline, cellphone. So, I would want to request a 2% rejection fee for my time and efforts to pay for my life's expenses. So, and that's not making me a living. That's just maybe getting back some of what I've spent, and that's not my ulterior motive to gain a 2% rejection fee. So, you would own the property, spend $15,000, $20,000, miss the opportunity for the ag people, the farmers, to now crop, which is-- season's coming up, rework the fields, get it back into crop for the fall. You're gonna lose that opportunity. If you set a reserve on the tracks, and the way I offered it is in, I believe, eight-- was it eight parcels? I don't have it right in front of me. The drawing is with Mr. Peterson. No, five. Five tracks? However many tracks I've got.
Ag land and then--
Yeah. One, two, house, three, four, five. I don't remember exactly how many tracks we've got. Mr. Peterson has the only drawing. Let's say you accept one or two of the offers on one or two of the tracks, and the other ones you reject, and now you've damaged integrity of the entire package. I wouldn't recommend it. I always look at these situations to where, if I'm in the seller's shoes, how would I handle it? Some do warrant reserve, very few, and very few do we ever feel like it's feasible to conduct. This particular situation, there's no lien on this property. Absolute auction will generate the most money. Our facts that I have given to Mr. Peterson, showing what we've acquired on farmland here recently, are very good. Farmland is doing very well right now, and the absolute auction is gonna generate the most money. 25% less at a reserve auction is a very common number, 15% to 25%. Just not received very well.
Could you give an example of what conditions would warrant a reserve auction?
Yes. One with a mortgage. Yeah. That's pretty much the main one. If somebody has a $250,000 piece of property and they owe $100,000, and the banks aren't gonna guarantee the payoff, but somebody does, it's illegal to conduct an absolute auction with a lien position without somebody guaranteeing the bank's interest position. That wouldn't necessarily bother me. That property could still sell, but it's still not gonna generate what it would at an absolute auction. So, I would work hard to try to get somebody to guarantee that, so we could conduct an absolute auction. When it's lien-free, it needs to be an absolute auction.
Any other situations, other than mortgage?
Court orders. I worked with Judge Sanderson this morning on dissolution of marriage, and that came up, and she appointed me the auction. Young couple were having disagreements, and that did come up, and she actually concided with me. She said, "We need to maximize the profits. We need to do this absolute." But sometimes, there are court order situations to where there are errors in disagreement, and it is subject to seller confirmation, or subject to court confirmation.
Any other comments? I will say that I talked to someone that has farmed all of his life and asked his opinion on what we're doing, and he said, "I really don't think you need a reserve." He said, "I feel very sure that you're going to get more than what you paid for it." So, there you go, Chris.
Well, Mayor, when the story--
I'm putting any pressure on you.
Well, I do have something at stake here. I want my name to say that I made the city money, not that I lost the city money. That's the way I want it, and I have a strong word of mouth in this area, and I wanna keep it that way. A great reputation, man of fairness, integrity, and honesty, and we do use the latest integrated software and technology in our auctions. We are very, very aggressive. I think in my proposal, I've offered to spend up to eight-- somewhere between $8,000 and $9,000 of my own money on this auction. I will guarantee you, it will be more like 10. I always push the extra mile. I'm always looking for an extra creative or aggressive method to generate more money for my seller, and I'll take it out of my pocket to do it. And some of the resources that I would use, just so the board knows, are we make use of the local agents in this area. They're connected across the country and abroad. And, of course, one agent that I like to use a lot, because he works very, very hard, is David Nelson. He has great ideas, too, and he might even want to tell you something about his ideas. We offer commissions for real estate agents to work with us in a referring position on the buyer's side and on the seller's side, and that is just more push for this project.
Looks like you're planning for June-- I think I saw that on--
Fourth. Mrs. Wilson, I did present a few dates that were kind of open to my schedule. We're booked into the end of June already, but this particular auction, from what I have seen and been on the property, and I did walk around it, I have not been inside the home. I did suggest I want to do this auction, conduct this auction onsite in the home, if the inside of the home is presentable for this. I have not been inside of it, but I'm thinking it is. It was described to me by Mr. Peterson what it looks like on the inside. While they're bidding, I would like for them to be able to see out the window what they're bidding on. So, if there's enough room for chairs and to suffice for my power for my laptops, because I use a-- the latest technology in what you would call is a big calculator, to factor in all the tracks. As long as I have that, I would prefer to do it onsite in the evening on a Tuesday or Thursday afternoon, not on a Saturday.
And a sunny day?
Actually, a sunny day's good, but, Mayor, the worse the weather, the more turnout.
Really?
Yeah. They can't go to the grandkids' Little League games.
No idea.
Yeah. Now, I wouldn't want to ask for a high-wind storm, but yeah, rain and snow doesn't affect auction-goers. Not at all. Yeah.
How many farms have you sold in your career?
The farms, I have been a part of farm sales for a long time. I opened my own company in '09, and since '09, we've sold, on the smaller side, I'm talking 20, 30, 10, 20, 30-acre tracks. We do one of those every month. On the larger side, 100-acre tracks, we do two or three of those a year. Before I opened my own brokerage, it was the same. Quite a few, quite a few. I've been a part of 300-plus or minus auctions in this area, Indiana, Tennessee, Illinois.
Well, we want you to make some money for the city of Paducah.
Well, I have full intent to make more money than you've spent, absolutely. Yeah. That's my full intent.
And I understand what you're saying about it being lien-free, but I kinda don't view it that way. It's the taxpayers' dollars, so...
Yeah, and my name's on it, too. I'm gonna do everything I can, and I have a lot at risk, too. What I mean by it is a mortgage.
I understand what you mean, but I want you to understand, it's not our money.
I understand that.
We're not taking a risk here with our money, so...
Right. Auction law--
I know.
Lien-free, absolute auction. I would probably tell you, and I wouldn't wanna lose a job, if you wanted me to do a reserve auction, it just wouldn't be productive, but, you know, you could twist my arm hard enough, I would run it for you, but it's just not gonna get the job done. And besides, when you put a multi-parceal method of selling, it's impossible to do a reserve type of auction with multi-parcels. It just-- you would have to do house and then 175 acres that way. We couldn't break it up into tracks. The survey expense is our expense. I split that with buyers and sellers. Our-- I'm sorry, with buyer and auction company. Sellers are not paying on this. Advertising's my expense.
To be clear on the tracks, and I don't have that map with me, but you've got three or four tracks, a couple on either side of the house, three acres or so, along with the tract around the house.
Good point.
Those are the tracks, in addition to the two farmland tracks.
I did. And what I did, I did go out and walk the property with permission of Mr. Peterson, and I walked the frontage, and the tracks that I proposed on the drawing that I worked with, with Hunter Martin, who would be on board on this project for sure, are comparable to the existing home. I think that's important, as well as, there needs to be protective covenants on the frontage of this property if it is bought in tracks, to where if somebody wants to build a home, it needs to be protective apples-to-apples to the existing property. Certain amount of square footage, certain amount of decor, that kind of thing, to match existing home, because we want to ensure bidder confidence as high as possible on that home, because that home is a very valuable home, very nice home, very attractive home. In other words, you would exclude certain type of housing. Now, if it goes all one buyer, he's a farmer, then he can handle that how he wants. There's no subdivision, no preapproval through planning and zoning. Let him break ground. There is one more thing that I would want to know while we're here, is the sharecropping proceeds. I've been down this road before. Sometimes, the sellers will forward the sharecropping proceeds to the future buyers, and if it goes in several different buyers, it's prorated. Sometimes, the proceeds remain with the seller, and all that's disclosed at the auction. But if you want to whet their appetite a little bit, you could certainly forward those proceeds, because I'm sure there is a sharecropping agreement with the city of Paducah and the farmer, but that would have to be dealt with. But that's easy enough to be dealt with. Just what do you wanna do with the proceeds?
Yeah, we do have such an agreement, and we'll review that for what--
Okay.
--flexibility there might be.
Yes, absolutely. It is-- it's income-producing property before we even start, if you donate proceeds, but it can be an enticing addition to the auction.
Okay. What if no one wanted him to continue that, the buyer? The farming? What if the buyer did not want him to continue farming?
We pay him-- that's our obligation.
Okay. The contractual agreement, I'm not familiar with, and there could be an out there I don't know.
Yeah, we have an out there. As you all recall, we sort of just went into the sharecropping thing for the first time last year. It'd been cash-rank before that, but yeah, that's all spelled out what our obligations are in that contract.
Okay.
But you think they usually do want them to--
It's both ways. It just depends on the needs of the seller. Sometimes, the sellers just need the money, and they will not relinquish it. Some do donate it towards the buyers, and that just gets the buyers even that much more enticed and excited. It's an event.
We have a little time to think about that, though?
Sure. Sure. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Especially if you're talking about June 4th.
And June 4th is a Thursday or a Tuesday.
Tuesday, I believe, Jeff.
It happens to be a commission Tuesday, one of the dates. Chris wanted a month to prepare, which I think we certainly want to honor that, to give him the time that he needs, albeit that is a scheduled commission meeting night, but Chris indicated they could start as late as 7:00. By starting at 6:30, if we need to meet to conduct some business briefly, we can do that, and still, those of you that wanted to be out there could. I assume most of you would want to be out there, so...
The high bidder's on the ground. You could do a 10 o'clock weekday morning. On the residential property, you probably still could, but I'd like to give some people a chance at work to come by. 6 o'clock's a good time, 6:30, any time in the afternoon. Daylight hours are long. As long as we've got power in the house, we'll be fine. Yeah. Weekday afternoons are good. I know there's some other questions. A lot of people do not know what I do for a living.
So, how do you all feel about the reserve?
I'm okay with it. I mean--
Without it?
An absolute.
Absolute versus a reserve, after what he's explained to us. I know that a lot of--
I know there's some other questions. A lot of people do not know what I do for a living.
So how do you all feel about the reserve?
I'm okay with it. I mean-
Without it?
An absolute.
Absolute versus a reserve, after what he's explained to us. I know that a lot of you on the commission, you know, felt that we needed to do that, to do diligence to our taxpayers, but the way Chris has explained this, it sounds like we would actually make more money without the reserve.
There is a potential for a negative impact. I know three business officials, I'm not going to embarrass them right now, but they won't even show up. They got deep pockets. The thing about these multi-parcel sales are, because we're breaking it up into smaller tracks, we're allowing a larger majority of the public that cannot afford the whole piece of the pie to buy a small piece. That's what forces Mr. Deep Pockets in the back of the room to bid against them, okay? You've got five tracks, you got a dollar on each one, he's got to go six.
I understand. It drives the price up on it all, because they want it all. They want the whole.
There'll be no participation if it's a reserve, though.
I'm going to trust you just because it's your job and it's not mine.
Well, I don't know if I can make you feel any better about it or not, Ms. Gault, but if I was in the habit of giving away property, I wouldn't be working for Judge Sanderson, Blackhawk Bakery, Keith Mert. I'm selling for him in June again, third farm for him in a year. I'm not in the habit of giving away property.
I think we probably did come into it thinking one way, and it's a different way for us to look at it now.
Well, lawyers, judges, attorneys, medical profession, they do not know what I do for a living. It is an art form. They're all different. There's not a blueprint. It's a creative process, and I have to evaluate the best way to put the most money in my seller's pocket, and they're all different.
Absolutely. That's what we trust you for.
Okay.
I guess, I came into this meeting, I assumed we would do it, an absolute auction. I mean, in the car business for 20, that's all we ever did. You take a car to the auction, there's no reserve. You just back up and let her go, and it works.
And one of the traits of a creative mind is to be able to change your mind, so.
That's right.
All right, well.
Get to let her, too.
We're ready to vote. City Clerk, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city board members.
Thank you.
Jeff, I just need to contact you tomorrow.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
We have someone here tonight that wants to speak on our next ordinance, and so we'll read that and then let them come up and speak before we vote. Do you still want to speak? No? Okay, all right. Well, I had this here, and I just wanted to make sure. All right.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC for construction of the Ohio River Boat Launch Project and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC in the amount of $2,588,465.78 for construction of the Ohio River Boat Launch Project and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
All right.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I'm not sure if this is where I'm supposed to do this or not. I have a problem with this ordinance. The cost is more than the grant. To pay for the boat launch, here's what we have to do. Number one, the city must borrow $196,545 from the investment fund at a time when we seem to be attracting new industry to Paducah. Number two, the city must borrow $200,000 from the MAP Fund, and the MAP Fund is the gas tax money that goes to repair your streets. The only way I can vote for this ordinance is if we, I mean, I would vote for it if the city only spends the money from the grant. Otherwise, I will vote no. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with MAC Construction Excavating, Inc., for construction of the riverfront redevelopment project Phase 1A piles and mass fill. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with MAC Construction Excavating, Inc., in the amount of $4,490,600 for construction of the riverfront redevelopment project Phase 1A piles and mass fill.
Second. All right, does anyone want to comment? We discussed this last week.
I've got, I just want to put it out there. Okay, tonight's vote is not just to vote for building a landmass in the Ohio River. It sets in motion a series of grants and events that will build a transit boat dock, marina, and boat slips. Here are my problems with the project. Number one, I don't think it is a sustainable business model. Why do I say that? If all the pleasure boats that were locked through Kentucky and Barclay in 2012 came past Paducah, Kentucky, we would see about three boats a day at the boat dock. That's if they stop. Three boats a day. Number two, again, it's the money. Right out of the chute, even though diligent efforts by Rick Murphy and his staff, the project is still 50% over budget. A $3 million project is now $4.5 million. How do we come up with the $1.5 million? Well, as we've just discussed, hopefully $900,000 will come from the Sheen Bridge Soccer Complex land, but that is still borrowed money. We had to bond that money. $521,000, the city will borrow from the general fund, or it will bond that money. Number three, after the landmass sits for a year, it'll have to be built back up to grade. It's in the contract. We do not know how much it will settle. We do not know how much it will cost the city, and we do not know, but we do know that whatever costs the city, this will be in addition to the $1.5 million we are already short. Number four, we know that we will create a park on the part of the old Executive Inn property. Again, how much will it cost, and how do we pay for it? And lastly, and number five, and of course, have we accounted for the cost of the maintenance of the dock, the slips and the marina, much less the building of those slips themselves? So, I'm going to vote no for this project. What would I do? I would attempt to change the permitted area, and I'd build a riverfront festival park on the wet side of the flood wall on the old Executive Inn website, and I think that would be to the benefit of all the citizens. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Amendment One of the Engineering Design Agreement with Florence and Hutchinson for the Greenway Trail Phase Two project for additional engineering design services related to the proposed underpass located at US 45 North Eighth. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute Amendment One of the Engineering Design Agreement with Florence and Hutchinson for the city of Paducah's Greenway Trail Phase Two project in the amount of $5,312.50 for additional engineering design services related to the proposed underpass location at US 45 North Eighth Street.
Second. Okay, we talked about this last week. It's the money we spent to look at changing that crossing at 45. All right, City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of South Fourth Street, also known as Meyer Street, at Wayne-Sullivan Drive, and a portion of Woodward Street at South Fourth Street and Wayne-Sullivan Drive, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of a portion of Fourth Street, also known as Meyer Street, at Wayne-Sullivan Drive, and a portion of Woodward Street at South Fourth Street and Wayne-Sullivan Drive, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the city to the property owners in or abetting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
We have a city manager's report.
Couple of things. I'd like to ask Parks and Recreation Director Mark Thompson to give you all just a brief update on the swimming pool project, construction project.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for having me up. I hope you all have driven past the pool and seen the slide going in. I know there was a picture in the paper this morning, too, but it's extended. I did want to let you know, though, there is a possibility that the spray pad portion of the pool will not be open on opening day. We're looking at a possible one to three week delay on that, and that's just on factory equipment orders that are backed up on that. So we may be one to three weeks. There's still a possibility that it could open right on time, but it's looking that it's a one to three week, and, you know, we're running right on the edge. There could be even a possibility we have to back up the general opening, but no more than a week that I would anticipate at that point. But right now, our target is still opening on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend.
Even if the spray pad doesn't open, you'll open everything else.
We would open everything else at that point. Concession stand is ahead of schedule. It's moving very well, and things are actually really busy right now, but they're working as hard as they can, and they're attempting to hit all the targets. But it's a good possibility that the spray pad in particular won't be open at that time.
Are your employees going to run the concession stand?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
You know, the other day when we did the mayor's book club, all the kids that came for that, that was their big question that day, was about the pool and the spray pad.
We're shooting for it.
They're excited. They're ready.
Well, the slide, if you haven't noticed and weren't aware, that the slide itself, as it's going up, is a double slide this year. It's always been a single slide in the past, so it's a double slide now that'll be going in, and it's higher than the old one, so it's going to be exciting.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
The only other thing, asking for executive session tonight on two items, one, land acquisition, and, second one, economic development.
Okay. Commissioners' comments. I know Commissioner Abraham's had a trip this past week that he wants to talk about.
As Vice President of KBC Leo, that's Kentucky Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, we held our Spring Summit in Orangeboro, Kentucky, and the judge executive and the mayor, they're quite proud of their Orangeboro. They went on and on about all the developments going on, and so when it was my turn to get up at the mic to moderate my panel, I took a moment to remind the folks in Orangeboro that we had about 40,000 out-of-town guests global, and we were, you know, we're trying to keep up. So it was a good meeting. I brought back a couple of panels for you guys to look at. There was, we had different panelists talking about a lot of different things. We had a justice panel. We had a panel on a strategic transformation of Kentucky's workforce system, and that was interesting because I remember a few months ago, out at the college, Techno College, we were talking about being work-ready communities, and I think it's a piece of the infrastructure of economic development that we have our citizens prepared for specific skills, and talking to some of the officials out at the college, one of the big stumbling blocks for us in obtaining that certification is the way the state education system looked at the graduation rate. They look at it from, if you enter high school as a freshman to your senior year and you graduate, a couple of things can happen along the way. Students can move, students can graduate early. Well, apparently, that number is, because of those two things, that's having, kind of making it kind of hard for us to get to where we need to be. That's a state, that's a state-level Kentucky Department of Education type of situation. It's like that across the state, and after talking to those guys, I don't know if this is a more transient community here, but everybody has to play by the same rules, so I'm not sure exactly why, why it's so, why that's going on here. Hopkinsville, those guys are work-ready under the same rules. So that's something that we're looking at, trying to figure out why we can't get our numbers up with the rules that are in play. The other panel I brought that I thought would be interesting, the Affordable Health Care Act is going to, is already in process. You have in your packet a timeline of a multi-year timeline of when things are enacted. One of the most significant ACA reforms is the requirement for states to create health benefit exchanges, the HBEs, or default to the federal-operated exchange. So states have an opportunity to create their own exchange or go with what the federal government wants to do. Kentucky has chose to go with their, go in exchange thinking that they know best what's, you know, for their own, for their own folks. I'm sure Cindy has a pretty good feel for what we're doing. There was a lot of information on this Affordable Health Care presentation. I mean, it was, you know, folks were sitting out there, and it's kind of like the kid in physics class when you ask them if they understand, and everybody's shaking their head, but not really. So you can go online and look at, and pull that up and look at it. There's some pretty commonly asked questions, but I wanted to bring you guys a packet so you can go over it and look at it. So it was a good meeting, and there was a lot of great information.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, who has the executive session?
I do.
All right, Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay, I move the board go into a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 618101B, and specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye, and this is nothing that we will come back to take a vote on tonight, so we're adjourned. Thank you.